If anybody would like to sign in to do public portion, please do now. Can we stand to salute the flag, please? So before we get started, I would just like to ask everyone if they, we could just have a moment of silence for the youth that we lost earlier this week in the Housing Authority. The only thing I want to say as a parent is mental health is real and it's happening and we need to do something because unfortunately we're using, losing our youth to it. So if we could just have a moment of silence for Mr. Boyd. Thank you. So Director, do you like to do the vocal?
Anthony Forbes. Andrew Impasato.
Here.
Aaron Lewitt.
Here.
Barbara Reyes.
Here.
Michael Russo.
Present.
James Sanford. Erica Seitzman.
Presence.
I would like to advise those present that the notice of the regular meeting of the Hoboken Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions on the Public Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this regular meeting Thursday, August 11 was given by publication of the annual meeting notice of the authority with amendments as necessary and was sent to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger on Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022 as notification to the general public of said meeting and sent to the city clerk of Hoboken on Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022 with a copy of the agenda to be posted on the Bolton Board in the, in City Hall, Hoboken Library and Hoboken Police Department and posted on the authority's website on August 2nd, 2022. I direct the meeting, the, I direct the minutes of this meeting to state that I have announced that adequate notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. Do we have anyone signed up for public portion? Before we start our public portion, I'd just like to ask everyone, when you do come up to speak, I ask that you speak respectfully to everyone on this board and I ask you to direct me as the chair and we will then speak to whomever you, you're addressing. Thank you. Yes, you did. Adrian Rollins?
The electrical issues that I had last month were only resolved after Sammy showed up with the electrician and actually physically pointed out what was wrong. The electrician didn't even bother to do that. All he kept was, you're overloading the outlets. Okay, so what outlets will we doing? We didn't know anything. After meeting with Mr. Recko, I said, I think after one or two calls about the same issue, maybe an investigation should be done. I don't know anything about electrical. I was trusting on the expertise, I could quote maybe, of the person who can do that. I shouldn't have had to call as many times as I did. It shouldn't have to come to that extent. Six, eight times. I don't know how many times it was. There's just one too many. Go through the process of first time, okay, let's, let's change the fuse. Second time, all right, let's see what else. Wasn't the panel, but then there's a third, fourth and fifth time. Help the resident. Don't just yell at them and scream at them and give them an attitude and, oh, it's your fault, it's your fault. I don't know what's my fault. You're not telling me, you're not helping me. I'm not an electrician, you are. Give me some pointers on what to do. And only after Sammy came in with him and said that should be replaced, that should be replaced. My son replaced it. We haven't had any issues since. But it shouldn't have had to come to have Sammy come in and do his job for him. That's just not unacceptable. And then a kitchen issue that happened apparently, and I believe I sent the email with the photos, a pipe broke and they replaced the pipe. But in the process, they left everything wet. They didn't bother to ask for anything to clean it up. The whole, when you open up underneath the kitchen sink, everything, when I got home at 5:30, 6 o'clock, it was still wet. I'm like, and my son had other things to do. My daughter was doing other things. So that wasn't on the forefront of their mind to take care of anything because they assumed that maintenance would clean up after themselves, which they should be doing when they go and do a job in a residence unit. I shouldn't have to clean up after you. I have to clean up after my own kids. I'm not cleaning up after a grown person. I don't clean up after the boys. They do their own. Then we had exterminate, the extermination came yesterday and sprayed all the outside. I don't need one. My son takes care of all of that. But I also mentioned that we've got mice in the building, running in the stairwell. He goes, oh, that's another exterminator. I said, well, you can bring it to your boss's attention and report it to him. I've already reported it to the Housing Authority and you know, don't, don't push it off on somebody else. If I'm telling you as an exterminator, I don't know to the extent what your scope of work is. How about you just, okay, ma'am, thank you. I will let my supervisor know. Not tell me, oh, it's not my job. That doesn't fly with me. I, I don't, I don't, and the cleanliness is still an issue in my building. My daughter wanted to speak and she's too profane with her mouth. So I said, no. She wants, she said, it's still dirty in the stairwells, which it is. It looks like it hasn't been cleaned for months. Outside the compactor outside my door, looks like there's still dirt there from three weeks ago. And if I'm going to clean the hallway, I'm deducting it from the rent. So if you don't want that to happen, have your guys go each floor and do their jobs properly.
Thank you, Adrian. Michelle.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to give you this in passing a lot of time in the past. So I wanted, because it's a lot of people holding on, they did what you said is allow her, men to go home, not with teens, with adults, teens and younger women. But I want to have one day, we used to have that so, I would like to, and since you're here, this is a passage. To have the one day of the four comparison, thirty comparison, block off whatever, no cars, none, everybody come out, hook out, and just avoid each other. Because there's too much sadness going on all around the world and, you know, hearing a little bit. And I want something so bright and day. So I spoke to the chief and said, sweet to you. And then I have to go sleepwalk, but I want things happening, so I ain't talk about it. You know, we need this happening. We need something that can be moved on. It's just sad. I'm a mom too, you know, so they just sad. I, I stand outside on my stuff and I watch a lot of stuff. And I don't really, I don't yell like I used to yell like I'm doing something already and I have a whole house and get some dough, but you know, I just want us to have, take the mind off of all this other stuff that's going on. We need something happening. And we appreciate the trip that we had. I had a good time in front. We walk around, slowly sit down, let it chill, you know, and shake. But it was really nice, but we need something more. We need some more. Actually, I, I see that they have the wall filled with things going on, but we need to have something here and that. We need something, something to have to change, something that's shaking up. So more to that, there's one happiness and all this sadness, nothing else going on in the world. It's more, we can still enjoy life. They still be children, they still be teens, they still be young adults. We just need to change the act. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Can we add Second Street? I live on Second. It's not there. Come on, come on, Michael, you gotta make it happen. Councilman Ramo? Oh, we have him too.
We could definitely make that happen. Contact fellow green, need more content. Look, just tell me the date you want. We'll figure it out from there. Not a problem. And we'll try and get some activities too. Just a couple of updates, hopefully for the residents. Still getting a lot of, I assure you guys as well, a lot of emails regarding waiting lists. I think everyone just give an accurate number. If it's 50, if it's 60, because all the inaccurate information over there regarding that issue, just say what the accurate number is each meeting. If there's 60 people vacancies, if there's 30 people, 30 vacancies, just say what it is. People try and say it's like over 200 now. So just that, you know, that'll probably serve you guys a lot better and the residents a lot better with that accurate number as far as what the vacancies are, maybe bedrooms too as well. And the transfer list, how, how you make going through the transfer list right now? Now probably also, I mean, there's people here tonight that have asked for transfers at this meeting and I don't think they've been transferred yet. So hopefully you're able to make way through the transfer list. And again, how are we making out with the repairs to individual apartments? From the list, I think it's over 100 individuals now. I know you've went through at least 50 of them. I, I've received around 50 probably. I know you guys have went back through residents and tried to make those repairs. Hopefully you've made some progress with the others as well and the overall maintenance of the facility. So I appreciate that. I heard you had there's some HUD visiting you guys today. I hope that was a successful visit and Director and I spoke and Councilman Bruce and I spoke about this as well. That whatever you guys need over the next couple of months and Director Brown, Brown and Brown's already working on the redevelopment. Already to be development proposal back for the city. We should hold that, hopefully have that back in it September. Hopefully go to Planning Board first week of October. That's our goal. Hopefully I move that process along. So hopefully, you know, beginning of 2024, we'll have a groundbreaking for new facility. So I appreciate your efforts, everyone. And so if they get the information out to the public, I should all appreciate that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilman. Sandra Smith?
Hello, everyone. Um, this evening, I'm talking about this building here. I just want to ask, when are we going to have the security in this building? That we need. I know you fixed the front door, which Sammy and them was working for repair. Now we have another issue. You can't buzz people in. So they're working on that too. So we need to get that addressed soon as possible because people will have to come downstairs to let people in. Unfortunately, when you fix it, somehow it gets broke from people coming in and sleeping in the hallways. And like you said, the residents aren't supposed to be talking to the people or anything, but they be trying to tell them to go because sometimes they'll walk downstairs, especially if it's on the low floor, instead of waiting for the elevators. And they also too has a president, um, ten association here. They want to know about the elevators. Is we gonna get new elevators? Cause it's kind of moving a little slow. Sometimes when you in the building, you press it, it just moves, it takes about like maybe a little bit five, five and eight minutes to come. So, um, we just want that to be done and we want like more activities here where we can have something outside in the front, like some benches, because the sun, we only have one bench here and in the park, but we have this all open. We should have some benches to sit there in the shade part because it'd be too hot. And it needs to be sprayed right there in that center of where the park at. Because for the simple reason, it's a lot of ants. Need power wash it or get it because sometimes the homeless, they sit there. They don't bother. Some of them don't bother. Some are a little bit too active. But when they sit there, I guess they'd be trying to cool their body down or whatever. But they go urinate over there and it needs to be cleaned. I think they did it before. I think Sammy did it before. They had cleaned over there and sprayed. So that was very helpful, but then the ants and stuff came back again. And the door, Mr. Greco, I know you had said, we had a meeting with the meet and greet that to keep this community room open for the seniors, because sometimes they would like to come downstairs to cool off. You know, just to mingle, not to be staying upstairs. So sometimes when it's open and when it's not open, I come in, open it, then you have somebody at nighttime to close it. If I see it open, I just tell them to press the button and lock the door and turn the light off. So these are the things that we got a lot of issues, work orders, like somebody had said about the work orders. It need to be addressed a little bit. I know it's the manpower, you don't have it. Um, but a lot of them contact you personally by phone or they go to Sammy or they go to Oscar, or I guess they touch base with the director of maintenance. So some of them are just waiting. I know it's time consuming, but some of these apartments are really bad. And we just need like more things to be going on with the seniors that we talked about with Danny. So I talked to Frank, what we need to know. One big question I need to ask, we caused a waiting list and we did the lottery. Um, who oversees that? When they pick, you? Okay, so when the younger people um, put their application in for one bedroom, for some reason it goes to Fox Hill for a one, then you get when it's separate list. It's a separate list, but they are single, young men's or young ladies, but why they go into Fox Hill to get one apartment? They're not, you know, disabled. Yeah, but, but none of them are not. That's the problem. No, I'm saying they don't want to go there. They was applying for the regular apartments, but they named pull to Fox Hill. So I thought you have like a separate list for the single ones that are working. These are people that are working. I didn't have an answer. So some of them that are not residents, they wanted to know. Oh, okay. And, um, the ones that are on the waiting list, do it goes back or it stays? On the list, that people that have been on it for many, many years on the waiting list for apartments? Do it be still on the waiting list until the number goes up? Or it is throw away or they have to reply again? Because a lot of them reply again when they had the list open again. That's a question.
That's something I guess. Frank, you can sit with her. Sure, you can answer.
If someone who got to start picking names off the current list, we had to exhaust the oldest. So they're all, we did a purge of the oldest, we said, let it to everybody, whoever just started this thing, whatever the last few people that were still on that list. Because we're the part of ours, we had a pharmacy already, but no people on the list. We would call people and they weren't taking the apartment section. So that's when we exhausted that list low enough. That's when we had to open up our waiting list. So currently right now, there are no people that are waiting from the oldest because we finished that list. We gave everybody an opportunity to respond to it and the people that did, where, and then very few people on the oldest could actually respond. Um, and then stayed up. So those folks who are asking about in Fox Hill, there's two separate waiting. So if someone only applies in Fox Hill or maybe even if
Well, they just put an application in to get apartment for one bedroom.
Maybe they only apply in Fox Hill and luckily it came out, but that's why they wind up over there. You can't, the Fox Hill list and the public housing list don't don't come in though, it's to complete the separate programs. So if you can apply for both, you can potentially be selected for both and then you're in Fox Hill and then six months later, your other application from that, you can take that one as well. However, you can't take one person from one list, anyone moves to another group. I can't even move anybody that's here in Fox Hill or anybody from Fox Hill from here. This is completely separate funding programs.
Okay, another thing, do y'all, I know you said y'all don't, um, separate families, but people are saying some families are being separated.
So what, what we do have, Sandra, is the senior accommodation.
Yes.
Someone in the household is senior and single, then we can accommodate the senior that way. We're not looking at that as a split. That would be where accommodating is seen. That's the only circumstance under which now a family is potentially being separated.
So
And disabled.
Okay, so, so the one, this is my understanding, when you separated, one family comes in here, but the other young one is over there. I know my time is up, but you know, that's understanding that a lot of them is not getting it. And I saw a family was split and they wasn't disabled, but they split them. So I didn't have no words for them, but I told them they need to come to the meeting, so they need to talk about it. And then y'all could answer their question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, I, I just want to remind everybody too, and I mean, we opened this meeting with a moment of silence. You know, a lot of times when it comes to citizens that are disabled, there's multiple levels of that. And they may not seem disabled, but they may not have a physical disability, but there are, there are multiple levels to that. So sometimes it may, it may not be as apparent and those individuals are not necessarily going to share that information, right? So I know, and I know this factually because I've been on top of the director in a number of instances now. The due diligence is done, right? We know if, if someone is being accommodated because of a disability, we have all that documentation. We have everything. We understand what's going on. That may not be apparent to someone outside of the administration, but, uh, but it's happening. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understands that.
Thank you. No, not, no one else?
Happy Thursday. Um, Doris Mitchell, 300 Monsha Drive. I want to know, what are you, what can we do about the skunks, the raccoons, the groundhogs? I mean, they jumping around everywhere around here. I mean, you can't even walk out here because they'll meet you and say, good evening or good morning. I'm, it's just that bad. Okay, and 218 over there, where sister right here in the back. Um, my daughter came out the building and the scunt was on the steps. Now she's saying that it's a big hole.
There is.
All around that area. Now I know, you know, you might have to deal with the animal control folks, you know, but it's, it's really getting bad. That you really can't come out. And you know, I don't have anything about against anybody cooking out, but when they cook out, they don't clean up. So they are looking for food. And this, this is one of the problems right there. Okay, so that's basically in the building that they have spoke about, um, not being clean or, or whatever. I mean, because I had a rollaway bed in my hallway for almost a month. And yes, I called my site manager and she worked on it as much as she could. And I do understand her hands was tired because she can't do no more than is granted for her to do. So it wasn't her. But I mean, for a whole month, from July the 4th until July, I want to say about the 26th or the 27th. A rollaway bed in the hallway and ain't no way in the world you can tell me that the maintenance man didn't see it. Because Ray Charles could see it if he had a half an eye. Okay, I'm serious and I'm not trying to be, I mean, how can you walk and you done swept the hallway, you done mopped the hallway, okay? And the bed is still there. And my site manager, Ms. Oliver Beck, she wrote down the day that I fall. And she said, I don't believe it, that they did not move that bed. So you know, maintenance need to do a little bit better. And once again, I know, you know, the manpower, but if you working in a building and you see a bed there for a month, now you tell me what's wrong with this picture. Okay, and one more thing and I'm gonna sit down. The hallways on the side, the exit where it just smells so bad or urine. It's got to be something that when they mop the hallway. Okay, then the hallway it's got, I have to say they clean, but the scent in that hallway, you open up that door, it, it'll kill. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. I would just like to vouch for what she says. I think I've spoken to Sammy about the holes that are in that area. Um, I also can say that they have gone and they have filled it the best they could with what they have to fill it with. But unfortunately they eat right through that and within a week, I want to say not even a week, we're back to square one. So it is, it's, it's very bad. I think I, I've called the director. I was left at him, actually couldn't get in or out of my house because they were having a feast with a dead bird. So it was scum, the, the groundhog, everything in front of the door. So this is happening, it's happening across the Housing Authority, but it's not a Housing Authority issue. I think Councilman, I have both of you here, and I think you guys can vouch that it's, this is a city problem. It's, it's the entire city that's, that's having this issue.
I've almost become like the, the, the council skunk and rodent professional at this point.
Rubens playing and stuff, the skunks eat the rats.
Or buy a lot of cats. I didn't know this until two years ago when the skunk problem first started like, uh, really become real prominent throughout the city. That skunks are protected species in the state of New Jersey. Uh, so you have to have an outside agency, hire an outside agency to pick them up and they'll take them 20 miles away and then release them into the wild. So we are now, you're not allowed to trap skunks. You, you can't kill skunks. You can't do anything that harms their life existence of the skunks. So that's, that's having, that's, that's a huge problem because you just take them 20 miles away, other skunks replaced them in this area. And then two other things happened the past two years. Uh, big hole in the ground on Madison Street, there's a new park over there. You're going 40 feet in the ground. That's going to disturb some wildlife that lives under the ground, which is skunks and rodents. And a second thing is taking down the Palisades, which is also a natural habitat where scouts, where skunks live, when Union City had a plan called Hoboken Heights, ironically, uh, tear down the side of a mountain. That's where rats and rodents live. That's obviously going to have a huge impact in growing that population. Then thirdly, everyone, everyone, a lot of people seem to like them is the parklets around, around town also creates, as the last speaker said, you give, you give rodents more food to eat, more availability, they grow their families. And so what we did as a city, uh, we hired, we hired professionals to come and bait all of our sewers from Second Street to Ninth Street. From Jackson all the way to the, I believe, Gran or Bloomfield Street or the Garden. But it's, it's a very large swath of our area within, within Hoboken, stuff like, from Second Street to Ninth Street. And then we asked the Hoboken Business Alliance to do First, First Street and 14th Street and Washington Street. That's the area where that's part of their programs. And restaurants are contributing to our rodent population potentially, like you see the New York City, see in Chicago, other cities that grew parklets in their town, which is great during the pandemic, but unfortunately, this is one of the unintended consequences of that. So we are working in that problem, obviously multi, multi-layered. So if you guys want to hire uh, someone to get the skunks and get them out or bait your properties as well, you know, we, we could, uh, like Councilman Bruce and I can give you the information of people that we hired recently. The Hoboken Business Association may hire, yeah. Excuse me? Uh, I, I, I give you the, I'll email to you tomorrow. Okay. Yeah, we were bait, we're literally baiting every sewer from Second Street to Ninth Street. So, and then, and every, and every new construction project also has to bait their projects as well, uh, going forward. So we're, 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 it gets, rodents do populate a lot faster than skunks do. They do multiply. So, uh, yeah, I'm kind of a skunk rodent professional, unfortunately, last couple of years. There you go.
We need it, guys. We need it.
Yeah, ceiling and all and things like that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So could we move on now to the director's report?
Yep, thank you, everybody. Really appreciate you being here tonight. Um, we're going to address some of the questions that came up of during tonight's public comment in my report here. Um, so thank you for coming. Um, I do have an addition to the report. Is this work, you guys working? I do have an addition to the report in that uh, we, I did have a visit from um, HUD today. Um, it was kind of a hastily put together thing from uh, the Department of Housing and Urban Development. There were two Assistant Secretaries of HUD uh, that visited us. Um, Deputy Assistant Secretary for Field Operations, Felicia Gaither and Brenda Johnson. They came along with Marilyn O. Sullivan, who's our Regional Director um, for HUD uh, in the Northeast Network. Who is also acting as the Director for the Newark Office right now, since their Director retired. And we've, we also had two people from the Newark Office that were with them. Um, they were actually in the area for another housing authority. And they work on issues with our redevelopment, uh, with helping us with the technical assistance, things like that. So they, they see our name all the time and they wanted to come and visit us. And uh, I got to tell you, it was an absolutely successful meeting with them. Chairman Reyes came along uh, to talk to them as well. Um, we informed them of everything we've been doing over the past five years. Um, and we informed them of our strategic plan, did a review of it with them. Talked about our ongoing challenges now and gave them an update like you will hear later tonight on where we are with Hoboken Housing Forward. Um, very, very successful. They committed to us that they would continue doing technical assistance with us. Uh, through the enterprise and other organizations, that they would continue to have folks like uh, Mr. Ellis to be on staff with us. That some of you have talked to. Um, it was a very successful meeting. They, I think it's fair to say, they were very, they, they expressed very clearly that they are very, very pleased. With the direction we are and the progress we've made. And I don't know, Barbara, I think that's kind of sum it up. It was.
They even, um, they walked the grounds. They went to see apartments that were um, fixed up, ready to be leased. And they also went to see apartments that were not fixed and were not ready. So they saw on both aspects of it. They walked the buildings, they walked the four pride, um, I want to say, the housing, Harrison Gardens, they walked that, they walked through Andrew Jackson. Um, so they, they did get an intense view of what our housing stuff looks like and.
It was very successful. So that's going to pay dividends in the long run. I've often found the visits like that really help us because when we do need help, they know us. And the name, the face, and uh, and, and we're very, very happy they came to visit us. Um, so I, I am starting my report tonight uh, with an update on the Hou- Hoboken Housing Forward Initiative. Um, one of the crucial decisions that we have to finalize as we move forward in the near future, not tonight, but in the near future. Uh, will be to decide our financing platforms under HUD. Um, specifically, if it is best to do a Rad Section Eighteen blend or just go pure Section Eighteen. Uh, to proceed with uh, our project. With that in mind, uh, we've invited Shannon Liston from uh, Recap Advisors. Uh, member of the Enterprise Partners team that is with us via Zoom tonight. Uh, along with Christina, I think's on, online uh, over there tonight with us as well. So I'd like to welcome, excuse me, them both to the meeting tonight. Um, they've been involved with us since the beginning. Many of you, they're very familiar. Uh, many of you have, have met them a number of times. And uh, we've invited up tonight Shannon to focus in with us on this question of. Section Eighteen, Section Eighteen Rad Blend. So they're going to give us a presentation. But I would like to just take a moment before I ask you to start speaking, Shannon. Um, uh, to go over where we are um, with our project today. And uh, a quick update is that we have received a draft memorandum of understanding from the city. Thank you all that have pushed that from the city side. We just, we, we received that this past week. It's over with the attorneys with us. We're, we're going through a review. We'll be meeting back with the city within next week to make some tweaks. And so we're pushing that forward uh, soon. Uh, crucial, crucial step. Uh, and once that is done, it will be brought to the board, of course, to subcommittee. And then the board uh, from there. In cooperation with the city, uh, we're moving forward with our study. Uh, to be designated as an area in need of redevelopment. Again, thanks to the city, they have hired an engineering firm. That we worked with last week to tour all of our properties and uh, they will be coming back. Um, we expect that to take maybe thirty, sixty days uh, before that decision's made. We hope thirty, that they get back to us from the engineering side and designate the housing authority as an area in need of redevelopment. So again, thanks to the city for pushing that. We must now perform an obsolescence study under HUD guidelines. So we're preparing an RFP. What is, for what is called, I know some of this sounds redundant, but we must perform under HUD guidelines, our own obsolescence study. Uh, so we're getting ready to go out with an RFP for that. Um, we are arranging an initial meeting with the Housing Finance Agency. As we go down this road over the next couple of years, they're going to be a crucial partner. And it's always tough to work with them. So we're being proactive and kind of giving them fair warning. That over the next three years, four years, we're going to be continually coming back to them with different phases of our projects. So um, and, and by the way, our, I think our, our recent experience with them, with the uh, the loan that we've gotten from them. Forgivable loan has laid some good groundwork with them. They know us. We know them. And things have gone extremely well there. So that's a good thing. Uh, we are uh, now studying the RFP and options on bringing on a special legal counsel for future development. That's kind of a very specialized area in legal councils. And so we'd like to get them on sooner than later. So they're in position with us. There's only so many folks that really specialize in that. Uh, so of course, that's not to say anything about our current legal counsel, but that's kind of that, that, that specialty linked with the development. So you'll be seeing that come to you before long. We are aiming for a special board meeting, probably in October at this point. We don't want to waste your time with a, a meeting that um, doesn't have some substantial movement. So we'll probably be back for a public meeting in October to keep everyone on the nitty gritty where we are. On our redevelopment rehabilitation. I just want to note again that I, I and my team remain available for any forum. If you've got a Rotary Club, if you've got somebody that you'd like us to address, take a look at our strategic plan. We're always available to come on out and do any kind of presentations, just like we do at our resident meetings, et cetera. We're always available for that. So that's kind of where we are now. That's what's been keeping the staff busy. And uh, and, and as we get all these studies done. So having said that, again, I'd like to reintroduce Shannon and Christina uh, from Enterprise Partners and Recap Advisors. Shannon, uh, the floor is all yours right now. Thanks for being here.
Great, thanks. Hi, everybody. Um, good to be back. It seems like it's been a, a couple of months since we last spoke. Um, so the goal, we're hoping this will be a brief presentation. And it's really just about what uh, on, on the last presentation, it seemed that the conversation really focused. Or, or um, was concentrated on whether or not to do a Rad Section Eighteen Blend. Or do a hundred percent Section Eighteen because there are some significant differences between the two. So back then I said, well, why don't we, you know, let's move forward. But then we'll come back and we'll focus strictly on the differences between those two programs so that you all can make a decision. So that's basically what we're doing tonight. So Lourdes, um, can you, can I share my screen?
As, as we're getting that share screen, I believe we will have a copy of this presentation sent out to you all tomorrow.
I don't know, I've, is anybody working on me being able to share the screen?
Yes.
Okay, all right, got it, got it, got it. All right, which screen? I think it's this one.
The most interesting one, please.
Uh, maybe not. This one, there we go. That's it. Correct one. Does it say, is it the cover page, the PowerPoint?
We've got it, Shannon.
All right, great, okay. Um, so, so basically, uh, what we're going to talk about is um, if it weren't for. The financial calculation between the two different programs doing a blend and a hundred percent. A hundred percent Section Eighteen, it would probably be that we would sail through this um, without having to pause. But for those of you have, that have been keeping up, um, when you, when you do um. The difference, there's a difference between what you collect on Rad rents and what you collect on Section Eighteen rents. And obviously here, the Section Eighteen rents are higher. So there's a very significant financial component to this decision. So the first screen that you're going to see lays out for Andrew, just for Andrew Jackson, because it's our biggest. It's our biggest problem property. It's the, it's the biggest um. Uh, AMP in the port, or the biggest, has the most units in the AMP. And so I wanted to point out just, you know, to you what that looks like um, in dollars. And then after this, we're going to go through all of the things related to relocation and resident rights and those types of things. So strictly on a dollar basis. When you look at um, the rent levels on a Section Eighteen unit. Which is what you see here, under ninety percent of small area FMR, these numbers here. Compared to what you get on a Rad unit, you can see that they're significantly higher, right? So when you do the calculation, I've done three calculations for you here. Um, we had talked about twenty percent Rad and eighty percent Section Eighteen. Then we talked about on the last meeting that um, that uh, the New York. Um, Housing Authority is doing a ninety-ten blend. So I calculated that out. And then this last one is if we do a hundred percent Section Eighteen and leave out the Rad component. Um, and you can see here that the annual um, rent uh, collection. You know, the differences between them, it's not actually that on a portfolio this size. It is not that substantial between doing a hundred percent Section Eighteen or a ninety-ten blend. Um, and, and then what that translates into is how much money you can borrow. Uh, which is this row here. And um, you can see that doing a hundred percent Section Eighteen allows the housing authority on Andrew Jackson. To borrow twelve million more dollars than they could if we did a ninety-ten blend. Um, and fourteen more million dollars if we did a ninety-ten versus a, a, a twenty-eighty. The cost of building a new unit in Hoboken is really, really high. Um, I think it's over four hundred thousand dollars a unit. So in the grand scheme of things. Twelve million dollars when we're looking at um. You know, a four hundred million dollar deal is not that significant. Um, so I wanted to lay out the numbers for you. So the next thing we look at is, okay, so everybody knows that Rad. Or a Rad Section Eighteen Blend comes with a very robust set of resident rights, and that's important to everybody. Um, so we have to compare these key features of the Rad and the Rad Blend. To a hundred percent Section Eighteen. So here I've captured what we're going to talk about in the subsequent um, slides. So we don't need to go into detail here, but the first thing we're going to talk about is affordability and the difference between the two programs. So in a Rad Section Eighteen Blend. Um, the Rad units are affordable into perpetuity. So if we do ten percent Rad units, um, what that means is we execute at closing a Rad use agreement. It's an affordability agreement um, that also has attached to it a non-Rad PBB rider. So for the ninety percent of the units or eighty percent of the units, um, which applies to those. Um, the Rad units will be affordable for the remainder of their existing useful remaining life. Um, the non-Rad units, the ninety or eighty percent of the units. They have to be affordable for the, at least the next forty years. So you can see that the blend comes with a very strict affordability requirement. Um, on the hundred percent Section Eighteen side. You are required to execute a Section Eighteen use agreement. Typically, it's thirty years. Um, but actually, there's no.
Guys, can we keep it down in the back, please?
There's no requirement for it to be thirty, so um, HHA could elect for it to be longer than that. And what we see a lot of times is that often the use agreement matches the term of the ground lease. Which is what is going to happen um, when we execute um, these transactions. So it could be seventy-five to ninety-nine years that the use agreement would require that the units be rented to folks. At eighty percent of AMI or below. The next thing we're going to talk about is the capital needs requirements. So when you do a Rad um, conversion. Whether it's um, a twenty-eighty blend or a, a ten and ninety blend. Uh, HUD requires you to do a specific HUD, uh, Rad RPCA. Um, and you have to establish what the needs of the property are for the next twenty years. And then you have to fund um, the dollars for whatever those repairs are for the next twenty years. So HUD really does do a, a good job of overseeing to make sure that. The housing authority has set aside enough um, funding to take care of the physical needs. Of these new projects or substantially renovated projects for the next twenty years. If you go with the Section Eighteen side, whether you do um, a ninety-ten blend. Or a hundred percent Section Eight, it does require what Mark referenced earlier, which is an obsolescence. Physical need study. And really what that means is we have to prove to HUD. That it's silly to repair these buildings when the cost of it is excessive. And the, the best thing to do is to tear them down and to rebuild them. So that's what an obsolescence study does. It's very different from a Rad PCNA. If we opt for the ninety-ten blend. I don't want to get into technicalities here, but we'd actually have to do both um, for, for policy reasons. Um, so though, that's the difference between the, the physical needs. On the Section Eighteen side, if you do a hundred percent Section Eighteen. HUD does not require you to establish a reserve for replacement account. But that is something that we um, Enterprise strongly advises any housing authority to do. When they go through the Section Eighteen program is to make sure that that um, account is um, set up and established. So resident rights, um, in any kind of Rad Blend, eighty, twenty, ninety, ten. Uh, the robust set of resident rights comes along with it. So in a Rad conversion or a blend, um, every resident has the right to return. You've heard this a million times, um, has the right to return to the same phase. Um, that they originally lived in, okay? In a hundred percent Section Eighteen, um, it doesn't mandate the right to return. But you can see that I put a double asterix there. And that means that. Um, Hoboken Housing Authority adopted a set of development principles that I think you're familiar with. They're posted on um, Hoboken's website. Um, the board's very familiar with them. So there are certain resident rights that aren't required, but that HHA has voluntarily. Um, chosen to adopt. So they are going to tell you, despite what avenue they choose. That every resident has the right to return to the phase that they originally lived in. The next one is a rent phase in. So um, there are lots of, I don't know, lots of, but there are a substantial amount. So there are lots of, I don't know, lots of, but there are a substantial amount of folks living in the Hoboken Public Housing Units that pay what we call a flat rent. And that means they're probably not yet paying 30% of their income towards rent, which is what the majority of folks living in the units do pay. So when you do a RAD or a RAD blend, Hoboken is allowed to phase those folks in to an increase so that eventually they're paying 30% of their income towards rent. And that can be over to a three to five year period, which is very helpful in certain situations. If you choose 100% Section 18, we're not allowed to do that. The reason is the RAD program was able to waive a lot of the regulations. And under 100% Section 18, those, those regulations are not waived. So if you were a flat renter, you would automatically have to jump up to paying 30% of your income towards rent. The next one is over income families. So in a RAD or a RAD blend, any family that is over the income limit for Section 8 is allowed to stay. And we can keep that unit on our Housing Assistance Section 8 contract. When you do 100% Section 18, that's not necessarily the case, although Hoboken has agreed because every resident has the right to return despite their income level, that they will talk to those residents and negotiate some contract rent that they would pay going forward. So we're not going to be kicking anybody out because of their income, just making the distinction between that RAD has an automatic protection for that. The next category is over housed families. So during this whole process, HHA will make an effort to what we call right sizing families, which means that we put families in the units that HUD regulations allow. A lot of families might be in a unit that has too many bedrooms for the number of folks in the household. For instance, a one person family in a two bedroom unit. In a RAD or a RAD blend, those folks are protected. HUD says we have to make efforts to put them in right sized units, but if those right sized units are not available, that's okay. They can stay where they are until a right sized unit becomes available. On the 100% Section 18 side, we can't do that. So an over housed family would have to, upon conversion and going into their new unit, they have to be in a right sized unit. Unit, there's no exceptions to that. Resident procedural rights. So in a RAD or a RAD blend, the, the provisions around notification to residents and termination, grievance procedures, all of those get carried over into the new Section 8 lease. That is not required in 100% Section 18, but HHA has elected to do that. That's one of the things that they can say, all right, you're doing it in RAD, we'll do it in 100% Section 18 as well. Resident participation and funding, again, that is required under RAD and a, and a blend. It is something that is not required under 100% Section 18, but that HHA has elected to also provide. And the last thing is choice mobility. So when we talk about Section 8, a lot of folks have in their head Section 8 vouchers. Here, both programs are the same. Once a resident signs a Section 8 lease post conversion and they're living there for 12 months, both programs say that if you would like to move somewhere else, you have the ability to go to the Section 8 leasing office and request a mobile voucher, at which point you go to the top of the waiting list. And if there is an available voucher, you will be notified. So there's a lot that I just talked about. I don't expect you to soak it all in tonight. And as Mark said, you know, we can get these slides out to everybody so you can think about it and maybe come up with some questions. Public stewardship is another strong component of RAD and a RAD blend. So under, under this, HUD requires that a converted property must be controlled or owned by a public entity or a nonprofit entity. There is an exception for tax credit properties, which is what these will be. We're going to do a tax credit conversion. And so the exception here is that the property can be controlled by a for profit entity, has to be in order to get the tax credits. But the property must be controlled by a public or nonprofit entity. And so that is satisfied a couple of different ways. A long-term ground lease, which is what we'll do here. And also that the Housing Authority has a controlling interest in the ownership entity is able to make decisions as things move forward. On the 100% Section 18 side, it's not a requirement. That it could be sold to a for profit entity and Hoboken would not necessarily have to have control, but again, double asterix here. HHA is going to elect and will mandate, won't negotiate unless they have control going into the Section 8 conversion. Preservation, I think this is our last slide. Oh no, relocation's next. So preservation, what that means is under RAD or a blend, HUD requires that Housing Authority replace every unit of public housing with a unit of Section 8 subsidized housing. Okay, it's called one for one replacement. In 100% Section 18, that's not required. There is no, you could tear down a building and not have to replace the units. I didn't put the double asterix here, but in the development principles, HHA has promised that they will do a one for one replacement. So for every unit of public housing that is, exists now, they will replace it with a unit of Section 8. Relocation. So under a blend, the Uniform Relocation Act applies. There's a lot of rules and regulations that go with it, with the URA Uniform Relocation Act. Every resident has the right to return to the phase of the development that they were living in originally. And if they don't return to that phase, for whatever reason, maybe they decide they're going to go somewhere else, or they would prefer to live in a different part of Hoboken's housing, then they have to actually sign a form that says they relinquish their right to return to the original phase that they came from. All relocation expenses are paid for. That goes for whether it's RAD blend or 100% Section 18. Under 100% Section 18, again, residents don't necessarily have the right to return to the same phase. So if you, if you started at Christopher Columbus and ended up at Andrew Jackson, that's okay in HUD's eyes. The, the Housing Authority is required to offer all residents comparable replacement housing. URA doesn't necessarily apply here, but the, the regulations are very similar. And again, all of the relocation expenses are paid for. Tenant protection vouchers. Okay, so when we do a RAD Section 18 blend, on the RAD units, you know, either the 10% or the 20%, whatever we elect, the Section 8 funding is automatic for those units. Doesn't matter if they're vacant. Housing Authority doesn't have to do anything to get that Section 8 funding. It comes automatically. On the remainder of the units that we're calling Section 18 units, the Housing Authority is going to have to apply for Section 8 funding. And currently HUD is only providing the funding for units that are occupied at the time that the conversion happens. In a RAD Section 18 blend, the Housing Authority must project base all of the tenant protection vouchers. So in essence, it becomes, the Housing Authority takes all of this funding from HUD and they have to put project based assistance on the units that stays with the units. On the 100% Section 18 side, the Housing Authority has to apply for all of the, the Section 8 funding. And again, they're only providing funding for occupied units. The Housing Authority also has the option under 100% Section 18 of giving tenant protection vouchers directly to the residents for mobility purposes to move somewhere else or to project base the subsidy. That is up to the Housing Authority. Project basing, those tenant protection vouchers will preserve the unit and allows the Housing Authority to actually leverage more debt to do all of the new construction or the substantial rehab. And so at this point, now that I've confused everybody thoroughly, I've been doing this for a long time, so it's, it's not so confusing to me, but I can imagine that I just provided you a lot of information. So I'm going to stop sharing and see if there's any questions that I might be able to answer. And if not, like if you need to digest it all, please make sure that you give questions either to the board or to Mark and his team. And they can, you know, email those to me and I can give you answers that we will definitely get back to you with.
Thank you, Shannon. A very nice presentation. We will have your presentation up on our website and we will have paper copies available at Central Office starting tomorrow afternoon. So if anyone wants a copy of the presentation, we'd be glad to give you one or email one to you if you drop me an email. So we'll have Shannon's presentation available to you. And I'll just say again, we'll be discussing this a lot over the next few months. With, we're, as I said before, we're expecting a special board meeting in October that I think we'll be getting closer to making the final decision on this. But having said those things, I'll kind of hush and let other folks answer and ask questions while Shannon's with us.
Guys, do you have any questions?
Shannon, I'm wondering, we've, we've been working on this for two or three years now. And we're nowhere. You know, you were, the enterprise people were very good. The non-enterprise people created no excitement. The architect designed buildings that look like a modern set of projects, not beautiful buildings. So my concern is when are we going to carefully schedule architects, somebody in the office who will run the program? Are we going to get nine or four credits, 9%, or 4% credits, which will make a huge difference in our financing? I'm not sure if we can get the 9% credit in New Jersey. But what we need to do is go forward with the schedule and we have to assign dates that we're going to achieve certain things because we haven't.
Um, so I'm not sure that we haven't achieved milestones. I do agree that things, things took longer than we had anticipated. But we're in a really great spot right now in terms of the board, you know, all being on the same page with each other and in a position where we've, we've got a plan to move forward. So I think it was in the last meeting that we put up a timeline of things that we were going, or maybe it was even the meeting before that. I can't remember. But happy to recirculate that. So as Mark pointed out, one of the next steps that we're working on is getting the obsolescence studies engaged because that, that's a big decision-making point in what we've talked about tonight. Also, the city plays a big role in this. And so we have been working with the city to move forward with the MOU and to get the area designated as a redevelopment area, which is a very important part of this whole process. And so in partnership with the city, we'll start working through that timeline. We can't, one of the other things that is critical is to get the legal team on board that will take you guys through this process. So we're in the, we've had several discussions about with HUD about procuring that legal counsel. I'm very happy with, you know, the results of, of where that's going. And we're also going to, you know, in terms of, we're going to start working on putting together an RFP for a development partner. But the city has some say in all of that and we can't quite get there until we've moved through some other steps with the city to procure a redevelopment partner. I think in turn
I'm sorry, I'm just going to interrupt you. What, what exactly are those steps that you think we need to, the city needs to take before we could start doing that?
So somebody from the city can probably answer that way better than I can. But my understanding is that we're working on a memorandum of understanding about what our role is, the Housing Authority versus the city. Once that's executed, then we're going to be, they're, they've hired an engineer to do the study to determine whether or not we can be in a redev, an area of redevelopment, which is also a big part of this. So things are moving forward that way. And someone can correct me if I'm wrong about that.
No, I think, I think you're accurate in saying that. I just don't want, so from my perspective, and of course I have a unique perspective, being on both sides of the transaction here, right? From the city's perspective and from the Housing Authority's perspective, I don't want us as an authority to get bogged down on what the city needs to do because the city is doing that, right? We have Councilman Ramos, I don't know if he's still here. He was here earlier. He spoke about it briefly. We have our head of housing here at the meeting. We are, again, from the city's perspective, we are making sure that that happens and happens as quickly as possible. I don't want to get into a situation where we're waiting on the city and then the city's waiting on us and then nothing happens. So I think Aaron's correct in saying that the concern here is the timeline and the things that we need to do. So I, I just don't want, again, I just don't want to get caught in that, well, we're waiting for the city. And then the city turns around and says, well, we're waiting for the Housing Authority, right? So, yeah, like I said, I'm in a unique position to make sure that doesn't happen. And I just don't want us to get bogged down.
Yeah, and absolutely. So communication obviously is very important here. Yeah, I don't anticipate that we're going to get bogged down in any way in terms of the arc, you know, the architectural pieces of this and the drawings and all of that. That will really progress once the development partner is on board. So, you know, I'm going to say we're probably six months out from bringing in a development partner here. It's probably one of the, the most critical decisions that the Housing Authority will make. And so once, I can guarantee you, because I've been on a lot of deals where we bring a, you know, getting to the development partner takes a long time. But once the development partner's on board, things start flying. You know, because they're just as eager as the Housing Authority to get the ball rolling and then heads start spinning. So I'm going to say, you know, within six months that-
Why do you think that timeline is six months?
Um, just from my understanding about the city process and putting out an RFP for a development partner has to be vetted. You know, we'll get, I'm, I'm pretty sure we're going to get quite a few good responses for that. And then there's, there's a negotiation process that goes on with that development partner. It's called a, you're negotiating the master development agreement, which, which spells out all the terms of the financial components of the deal, the timeline, what exactly is going to happen. My experience with that has been that it's taken a couple of months to get through that process with attorneys, et cetera.
Shannon, can you explain what the development partner is responsible for?
Oh, gosh. Yeah, well, well typically most of, in the, in the deals that I worked on, the development partner is the one in collaboration with the Housing Authority. So there's not just, there's not just a development partner. There's also the Housing Authority, they're a team. And so they work to, to build the whole development team in turn, including the architect, you know, the general contractor, all of the third parties that are involved and pulling this all together. That is what the development partner will do. They also put up all the financial guarantees related to this, which are substantial. And they will set the timeline. They really are the driving force behind the redevelopment. They'll, they'll be in charge of doing relocation, management, figuring out who's going to manage the property going forward. It's a very complex situation. Not that it can't be done because it's been done, you know, over and over again, but it really is a process and you don't want to rush through this first part of it. Because you, you, you absolutely have to have everything lined up and the right partner in place in order to be successful. And this first building or set of buildings, phase one has, has to be, an ace, you know, has to be an ace. So it's really important that we take the time to make sure this goes right.
Thanks. So just quickly, Shannon, I mean, I know there's some big decisions that we have to make. I, I think the first, as you said, the first phase of this is, it really has to come off perf- almost perfectly. But we still have to figure out how that's going to affect phasing of the entire project. What other properties are involved? And I know the answer is yes, but how prudent is it to have multiple development partners for multiple sites? Because I think that helps with phasing times so that we can, in essence, get our residents into the housing that they deserve. Why would we want to prolong that process for six months in your estimation? If in fact, we could get those RFPs completed and ready and start voting on that at our next, you know, meeting, following meeting, whatever it may be. I want to kind of run this whole process on multiple parallel tracks to increase the timeline and increase the phasing, but doing that respectfully and doing that as prudent as possible.
Yeah, so I think, um, the Housing Authority is open to multiple development partners. That's always been the case. You know, this, this does have to happen in phases as, as has been outlined in the strategic plan that was presented. They're really, because of the situation of having to build a building first and then relocate people into that building because of the very low vacancy within the city, there's just not, there's just not anywhere to put people. So it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to hire multiple development partners out of the gate. You can put out an RFQ and a request for qual- for qualifications and bring in a bunch of folks and know that there's, you know, be talking to multiple development partners at the same time. But in reality, we can only really be working on one phase at a time unless something opens up. Unless, you know, we find a parcel of land, you know, that we have, that now we can do parallel tracks. It's not the case right now, but that's not to say that won't happen down the road. You know, that would be a great thing.
What about our senior buildings? No, there's no, there's no relocation needed for those, those two.
Yeah, there is, yeah. There is, the amount of rehabilitation that has to go on for those senior properties requires for them to be relocated out of the, out of their unit for, I don't know what the timeline is, but it's-
We would need full vacancy in our, in our senior buildings to do the additions.
To do rehab to the existing sites.
That's what I'm asking. I'm asking about additional portion of the building that we're building. Relocation to start that process, correct?
I don't know that that was part of the strategic plan to build additions onto those buildings.
Yeah, we do anticipate some additions on our elderly disabled buildings, but that plan doesn't work unless you're doing the whole building at one time. If you look back at that plan, if you're going to move the folks out of this building over to another building, then we come in and gut this building and do the addition at the same time. It won't help us a heck of a lot to just build 20 units or 30 units out there. Brand-new units, it's not going to help. We're, we're still not going to have enough space there to do a whole new section of our buildings. I think as we move forward, we can certainly relook at the plan and have some conversations about that, Councilman. But at, at this point, as, as we look at it, I don't see how that would significantly jumpstart. I think Shannon's idea that if we can find another parcel of land, for example, something larger where you can build those 70 units or 80 units, now we're talking, right? Now, now we're talking about jumpstarting and maybe doing the parallel. Again, that's just a knee-jerk, but I think that's where we could get real on some type of a jumpstart on parallel tracks.
Well, at the very least, I think we should do the, at least the RFQs to pull those people in to kind of line people up so that when we can pull the trigger for multiple partners, we can. Again, I don't, I want to try for us as the authority to have our professionals in place, have those partners in place and really keep this ball rolling.
Couldn't agree more.
Like I said, I mean, the city side of it, we'll deal with on the city, but, but from our perspective, I want to make sure we're doing everything in our power and keep this ball rolling quickly.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, we're just as eager as everybody else to, to, to see something happen here. And, yeah, I just, I, I just want to reiterate that this is a very reiterative process, right? So just because we have some concept today doesn't mean that that can't change over time. And this is going to be a long process, no matter how we slice and dice it. Hopefully we can shorten it if there are other opportunities, but it's going to keep changing, right? It, because for, for multiple reasons and we just have to be open to that and really take advantage of any opportunity that comes up. But yeah, absolutely. The RFQ that goes out for development partners, it's going to take a while to actually get that RFQ put together. Not, not months and months, but it, you know, you want it to reflect what the Housing Authority really wants and what their priorities are and so that you don't get folks responding that are on a completely different page. But again, I think it's exciting. There's people, I, I'm sure there'll be lots of developers very eager to respond and we'll have a whole host of folks. Yeah.
And it's good that this is coming up because I had mentioned in my report that we were, we were anticipating with our team of having maybe a special board meeting early in October. Maybe we can talk about pushing that up into September sometime so we can really spend an hour or two getting back, open up the strategic plan and see where we are. Because we want to push this thing as fast as we can.
Yeah, and we also talked about having additional resident meetings in September.
Right, so we'd have those on a parallel track.
Yep.
So we'll, we'll see if we can pull those together.
So I guess, I guess my question to you, Shannon, you director, is do we need to make any significant decisions about funding for some of those other things to happen? Far as getting the attorneys and the, the other professionals that we need? Do we need to make the decision of a Rad Section Eighteen blend versus, we don't need that decision right away?
Not to, not to hire an attorney, no, you don't need that. You're really looking for a legal team that specializes in public housing redevelopments so that crosses all of, you know, they'll know everything. Section Eighteen, Rad, doesn't matter.
So the draft MOA that we have, we could vote on that. Once the professionals look at it, finalize that draft, we could vote on that. Like these are the things that we can do before we make a decision about funding or before we make a decision about development partners. And those are the things that I want to make sure we are doing because then, you know, the city's not waiting on us.
Yeah, we, we can be on our own track in terms of, so, so the reason the legal team comes first is because they are going to be key to helping the Housing Authority put out the RFP, RFQ for the development partner, right? And also to vet, um, the folks that come in and negotiate the master development agreement. You can't, the Housing Authority can't do it on their own. They need someone who's seen this over and over again and has the Housing Authority's best interest at heart. And so that's really the first critical step here. At the same time, we're going to be pulling the trigger on the obsolescence studies just to see, um, you know, whether or not we can do the 90-10 blend.
Okay, so that obsolescence study before we go out for the development partner is needed. The area in need of redevelopment needs to be in before the development partner, the MOU and the legal team, and those are all things we're working on. So we're going to keep pushing on those. So we're set when we're ready to go.
Awesome.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you, Shannon. Great job. And thank you, Board. No, no, great. These are absolutely things we need to be doing now. Anything else on that? And again, these, Shannon's presentation will be available to all of us tomorrow.
All right, so if, are there any other questions or? Am I free to go?
You can go have dinner now.
All right, thank you. Bye-bye.
You don't want to wait and just hang out?
No, thanks.
Director, can we make sure that we email those to the-
Yes, those will be emailed to the entire board and to anyone who wants to drop me an email, text, call. We'll make sure you get one by whatever form you want and we'll also print a bunch of extras down at the office.
Thank you.
You said you, you received the MOA, right?
Yes, yes, just received the MOA. Oh, yeah, I can send the draft MOA out too. Harold is cranking away on that one right now. So to continue, to continue my report, uh, security policing issues, the security contract for HUD, the security contract is that HUD for approval for the security guards? That, that came up as a question earlier, but we're not waiting. In anticipation of that, we have an apparent contractor. So we're meeting with that contractor, as a matter of fact, tomorrow morning to start planning on, as soon as that contract hits back to us from HUD, that we're immediately entering that contract with them and moving forward. You all have already approved it. And so as soon as that gets back from HUD, we'll do our due diligence and get that cranking. I'm still, as I've said before, we're still looking probably, I'm hoping at this point mid-September. If not before, but if it hits us, we, we should be able to have them here working very quickly. We are going to have a round of meet and greets again next month, so we'll see you all in September. For our, now it's turned in from every three months, I've turned it into every two months for now. Meet and greet round, so we'll be seeing all of the residents during September. We have a couple of things on our youth. The Resident Services Committee met, uh, working on a plan with resident volunteers to utilize downtime. And if we're setting up another meeting on that over at Mama Johnson Field. We're looking for, uh, we're going to be looking for folks that might want to be over at Mama Johnson monitoring the field while it's open. If we have no other programs running there, it's not the city's time and we don't have an official program, we just want to open the gates and be able to have free time play. But we need a monitor there. So we're, we're opening to be, open to people that want to come in and partner up with us. We have been running our community basketball league since the 22nd of July, expected to run through August 27th. We do have a Housing for Hoboken affiliate, our affiliate that has run a GoFundMe campaign. To date, we have received correction in my report, 2028. We've now received 2,780. We actually got a $500 donation today. So my heartfelt thanks to all that have contributed and worked on this project. It's been really successful. I encourage any resident that wishes to meet with me personally to schedule an appointment through their manager's office. Residents, reach out to Ms. Lourdes at our central office. Leave a note in our mailbox. You know, Mr. Reco, we want to meet with you. Whichever form you can get with us, we'll schedule you in. I do run on meetings, I live by meetings, so we, we need a schedule and have you in. If you do just walk in, you'd be very lucky to catch me, but if you do, we'll meet with you. But, uh, it's kind of hard to do it that way. We've made many intake meetings over the past month and our management staff's ready to serve you if needed. The Hoboken Police Department continues to be very responsive to our situation. Regular patrols, I think we've all seen the police presence on our developments over the past few months. Again, thank you. We've got some officers that may be hiding behind the column for me that were here, but thank you for everything you're doing and meeting with us on a regular basis. A number of significant drug-related arrests have been made over the last couple of months. They have been out there working. In, in tandem with that, we followed up with our attorneys. We're taking a number of court actions against leaseholders, some of which that have already been successful, by the way. And, uh, when we have that preponderance of evidence that they've been involved in a violent or drug-related activities, we can take action. Our, our communities, our camera system continues to be a valuable tool for us and the Hoboken Police Department. So we appreciate that investment that the boards made in our camera systems. They really do work. We are very thankful for residents that have come forward to identify individuals. We need proof in order to move. So anytime we can have evidence of a particular thing that happens, please keep in touch with us. Again, if you see something happen at 10 o'clock tonight, get with your manager, give us that information so we can go back and check our cameras. We can get the evidence we need. I know it's frightening sometimes for folks to individually testify. Even anonymous testifying helps. If you're not anonymous, it helps even more because we're always in front of a judge in the end to talk about what evidence we have to take an action against a resident. So please keep in touch with us. We need to do this together. It works when we're together. Ms. Shaw in Policy and Outreach has working on something that's going to be great news to Erica. We anticipate applying for funds to begin a family self-sufficiency program, knock on wood. Wait till we get it. For the first time in recent memory, HUD's notice of fund- Wait till we get it, uh for the first time in recent memory, HUD's notice of funding on this. Actually said the magic words, please, if you have a new program, apply. Uh, they haven't done that in years, so they've refunded old programs. And this time, when it hit the streets about two weeks ago, uh they said new programs will be funded under this round. So we're going to put an application, the applications do in October, so we have a little time to put it together, but uh we, we will. Um, go after that very hard, uh because an FSS program would be great for us. Uh, we are developing a resident handbook uh for each of our sites. And uh a new newsletter will be hitting the streets for you shortly. It will be on the website and for the first time, we're doing a paper edition, our second edition is um now being translated into Spanish. And uh once that's done, we'll be ready to hit, so it should hit, I would think, in the next week or so. Thanks to all for our special board meeting on August first, uh the resolutions for the approval. Of the A C O P revision and the drug abuse and criminal activity policy is in front of you tonight. Uh, COVID nineteen continues to affect us, uh we've had a, a number of staff being out. Over the past two weeks due to COVID issues um and forced to quarantine. We continue to follow the most current CDC guidelines in dealing with safety measures and we'll continue to do that. As we go into the future, we just need to hope this thing goes away someday. Um, we can, on staffing, we continue to search for an additional plumber to bring on to our maintenance staff. Uh, we are looking at the possibility now of contracting out a qualified purchasing agent. Um, for, for Emma's crew and we're working with the enterprise partners right now. Um, to review our staffing organization, they have some recommendations. On um redoing our staffing for now and into the future. Um, and uh we're working on those now, we should be able to get to you within the next couple of meetings on some recommendations for reorganizing our staff. Foxville Gardens, the renovation contracts are in process, pre-job meetings are, have been held. Uh, supply chain issues have affected us greatly here. Um, and I'll, I'll mention another one in a little while, uh but we should be able to get the material in and have repairs begin soon. Uh, housing for Hoboken, we will be back to the board uh next month with the new housing for Hoboken. Uh trustee recommendations, which we'll get to you as soon as we can, uh we did have one meeting on it this month uh. But didn't pull it together to bring to the board this month. Uh vacancy issues, um and I think there was a statement on that earlier. Uh, attachment one is the monthly vacancy report, we had six newly used newly leased units in May. Uh, I'm sorry, blew it, I didn't change that from the last report. Um, that was in July and we had six transfers, I concentrated on the numbers. We had four residents vacate their apartment with a ninety-four percent occupancy rate as of August first. Um, holding study from last month, of course, our initial goal is ninety-five percent. Which will put us in line with HUD's position, our overall goal is ninety-eight percent. Mister Merchant, would you like to comment on our vacancy efforts?
There's a little portion here, the ready unit part. Uh, there are twenty-three units uh ready to go. Uh, Zane is just handing over key scores, so. What's significant about that number is that those other twenty-three units that finished off at the top could be at that ninety-six. That fifty-four is our magic number, fifty-four vacancies, I mean, if we hit fifty-four, we're at ninety-six. So now with this being said, we have a few with today's HUD's visit, which is really good for us. Because they were able to walk Harrison Gardens with us and see with them with their own eyes and. Experience what the stairwells are going through and why it's so difficult to lease up at Harrison Gardens right now. So that'll make it easier for us to, to get that approval of taking whatever units are in Harrison Garden off. Plus the twenty-three will be way into the ninety-six, which is the number that ninety-five is what we need. To, for, for reporting levels, but ninety-six is what gets us out of trouble status, so. Right now, I think it's so within the grasp of us and we're going to put a special team now, it's called. The road out of our trouble status, which we've been in for over eight years.
Can I ask the question that I think everybody's thinking about?
Yes.
How fast will we get those twenty-three units leased up? Now that they're ready to go.
So historically, what we've been doing is whatever units they give us, at the end of every, every month I give you the report. We've been leasing up pretty much everything that's ready at the time, so now we have twenty-three new units, so knock on wood. We should be next month when I come here, they should be gone.
We hope to have them done this month.
Correct. And already of those, there's at least ten that have already leased up that didn't count in this report, they wanted them moving into August. And you guys are looking at July's report, so already some of them are already um occupied since.
So I'm going to hold you to it.
Yeah, yeah, and uh the whole point is that.
Hold, and hold your pay if not.
Let's do it. But the whole, the whole point is, it's not even just that, this is like historical.
I get it.
It's like when we get to that point.
I think everybody's patiently waiting.
Yeah.
Point, I think we're.
It's like a finish line there.
Okay, and we've done about a hundred and fifty units this year.
Correct, and since the, since.
Which is amazing.
So if, if all of well on that twenty-three is totally leased up, wha- what would our number be as far as vacancies?
Well, we should, the magic number that we want to cross fifty-four, fifty-four is our, our number that puts us at ninety-six. So we want to see less than fifty-four vacancies, then we're in the money.
So if we reach up all twenty-three, we'll, we'll be there, we'll be at fifty-four exactly.
We'll be at fifty-five.
Okay, that's right, alright.
So.
Fifty-five exactly, right now, and I think Councilman Ramos mentioned that somebody was saying we had two hundred units, no, 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 no.
And, and that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, we, we've got seventy-eight vacancies, as of August first, we had seventy-eight vacancies. If we re, if we lease only those twenty-three, we're down to fifty-five and we may well beat that at that point. Um, and in any, uh in any group that you have here. Um, you're going to have, we, we at any time are going to have anywhere from forty to fifty vacancies, just naturally. With thirteen hundred units, you're going to have about that many, we want to beat that. But, but you're going to have about that many on average in property management, so if we can get down to that fifty-five, we're in great shape.
Those fifty-five, are they still waiting to be renovated or they just?
Awesome question, so as they just handed me the twenty-three and jumped into the next set. And really what's left untouched is forty.
Okay.
So the last forty, there's crews in thirteen, fourteen apartments that they're going to finishing. Forty is what's completely untouched, okay, as of right now.
Thank you.
So once we reach our goal, does that mean that, that's it, we're going to stop?
Oh no, 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 that just means uh we, we hit a milestone in hindsight that takes us out of trouble status.
Okay, so then we'll continue to rent.
No, obviously.
With individuals on waiting.
Absolutely.
And once those units are rehabbed and ready to go, that frees up some staff to start dealing with some of the other issues that we're having.
Well, you hit it on the head. So the, the vacancy is like part one. And that train is moving, it's, it's heading towards the station. But really, really, and what, and I'm glad we have all our managers here tonight, so thank you for being here. And the point is, we're, we're in the process right now of special training, we're going to go over the next four weeks. We, we started, Matt has sat in with us for the, for the first meeting, he's going to be with us at the end for any questions. The real goal here is to put a team in place to start working on this tenant outstanding rents. And recertifications, because we, until we fix that, that's as big of. And people's eyes vacancy is the biggest problem, that is a big problem, but. Recertification and paying your rent, that's how we stay in business, so we need to stay in business.
Great.
That's the next focus.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to your crew for working so hard on this. We are, yes, sure, sure.
So now that more units are going to be rented, um and leased up and so forth, are we ever thinking about getting more maintenance? And I'm, I'm just asking.
Right now, we're, we're essentially running a break-even budget, essentially. Um, so it's really a matter of can we collect our excess rent? Can we bring more income into the housing authority? And my job over the past five years has been to increase our reserves as much as possible. We, we haven't significantly increased them, we've held steady and we've increased a bit. Um, but we can't go into a deficit spending situation every year, so um. The answer is yes, we take a quick, we take a good look at it, uh we think we have a couple of spots we can get. I mentioned earlier, we're looking at a new plumbing position, which we think is crucial, probably. Seventy percent Sammy, seventy-five percent of our work orders, issues, seventy-five percent are plumbing, plumbing issues. Yeah, yeah, and time, uh broken stacks, broken supplies. So that, that new good, solid master type plumber is crucial, um so we're looking at that as a first step. Uh, we can't break the budget on any given year, but we think we can make some improvements there, some more staff.
Even if it's hiring um part-time.
Well, you know, that's always, if we can find, if we run across somebody that's talented, that can actually help. But if somebody wants to come in part-time, we, we grab them, I mean, we grab them without a doubt, yeah.
And the other thing is that like um we. Uh, we've come into a, a security guard contract that we weren't anticipating. So that is costing us one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. And that's something that like uh we found the money for it. Um, but it wasn't necessarily like some, so that's coming out of our reserves, Mr. Reco.
Right. There's always that decision, right? And that was a crucial decision, but you're always weighing those things. Especially, we, we do have our request in to bring on the local carpenters unit as well over with HUD and. Um, we, we keep pushing them for a final decision on that, we had another meeting um with HUD on that topic this week. They want some more paper from us, so we're providing them more paper, so. Special capital projects, the uh NJH MFA project is really approaching completion. We really only got the Adams Garden Boiler Project going on. And the very last of the Harrison Courtyard going on right now. So those are really the two projects that are, that are getting finished under there. Uh, we hope to be done with the uh, the courtyard within the next couple of weeks, I think we'll be completely done. The Adams Garden is another supply chain issue, we're waiting for a content set re- return tank that's taking forever to get here. And when that's done, we'll, we'll be able to wrap up that project, which has been, what, eighteen months, we've been working on this project. Um, the emergency generator uh project that you approved last month, um the infrastructure will start soon. Uh, but an emergency generator under that contract will take nine months to arrive. For the generator, nine months, so those won't be completed until the spring. The contractor can do the infrastructure, pour the pads, get all that ready, uh but unfortunately. Um, I have fell off my chair, I thought uh we'd be done in a couple of months, but uh supply chain issues, they're out there. Uh, once that project is complete, only Andrew Jackson North will be without updated generators. Uh, these generators in this phase are going to see CG and Adams. And once that's done, the only section of all of our sites without new emergency generators. Will be Andrew Jackson North and we should be able to bid those under capital funds next year, so as spring comes. A special thank you to the city for once again funding us under C D B G program, thank you city. Um, we, we were just awarded twenty-two C D B G funds in the amount of six hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars, thank you city. Uh, in that budget, there's three hundred thousand for our boiler replacements. Uh, fifty thousand for lighting upgrades and a two hundred and seventy-eight, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand for security and has enhancements. Uh, we're still working on getting the duplicate boilers at each site, um we need lighting throughout the authority. Um, so we're, we're going to be able to significantly upgrade our lighting. And the uh security enhancements are really crucial right now, our, um, our camera systems have uh. Uh, switches, uh complicated switches in every building that a system's in, they are old. They are getting up, they are absolutely, a- actually obsolete past their useful life. And our consultant is very clear with us that we better get those things replaced. Um, and uh so we're going to use that money to replace those infrastructure systems, um the cameras. A fellow named Dan Aloya, um his company name, Emma, I always say Dan.
Uh, it's Unified Technology Consultants.
Thank you.
And he's been like, um, he's been very helpful with the city and the police department. In whatever like needs that they've needed. So, he's, he's been a great partner for us.
I'm glad Sergeant Collins is shaking his head.
Isn't that true Sergeant? Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
And he knows our system like the back of his hand, he really does. Welcome Sergeant, good to see you. I didn't see him earlier, I've been, I've been busy working, I'm busy talking, talking to these people. Twenty-twenty-one, last year's C D B G funds are under design, uh mostly dedicated to boiler work. Um, and may come, be combined with this new boiler work that we got this year. Uh, we're administering the twenty-twenty C D B G funds, uh the only work left on that is to finish that generator contract. That we're going to take nine months to get the actual generator, so once that's done, our twenty-twenty C D B G funds are ex, are, are completely spent. Um, management report, uh we've essentially agreed, well, we have agreed. With our management department of three major initiatives and goals for the coming year. Um, we need to achieve and maintain that ninety-six percent occupancy rate at the very least. Achieve a ninety-five percent or better score in HUD's pick system. What that means is the reporting on our occupancy as well as reporting and completion. Of all of our recertifications over time, so we want to achieve a ninety-five percent or better on that.
What was it last year?
We were, do you know off the top of your head?
And right now, we have the most historically low number, seventy, our pick number.
Yeah.
Uh, ninety-five is uh like the lowest number, we held steady at eighty-eight for a little while. This has to do directly with people not complying with certification, so, so we call them, we send them a letter, we say. And now, that's part of all the work, we made out the notices, because now we're going to start, the managers have sent out the notices saying, listen, if you don't recertify. You're going to get evicted, didn't do anything, now they're going to come out of letterhead from the attorney's office. And that's, that was going to be the big push, unfortunately, for whatever reason during COVID, people figured about. Then they could stop paying and then recertify, that was not the case.
Well, can, can we, I don't see any, we don't get a, a monthly report on what we're talking about. Rents, collecting rents. Is it, can we start putting that into?
Sure.
Monthly?
Sure.
So we can start seeing, you know, how much money is owed and.
Absolutely.
Cause software was, was it?
Yeah.
Mentioned that software is a key component to that, we fixed that issue.
Yes.
So let's start to see if that's actually.
Absolutely.
Going to start bringing in more money.
Cause that's going to be a major initiative this year.
Right, and, and part of it is, we're going to start setting those rules, that's what this training is about, is about setting. Just like we said, okay, we're trying to get at least ten, fifteen apartments leased up at that point. The next phase is going to be, we want to get thirty, forty families each, each month to come off of the, as again, the rent. Nearly passed over into the agreement, something that moves on to the beginning, counting in a way. So if we can start to do that, so yes, being able to see those numbers every month.
Yeah, so you just said, you just said thirty to forty families, right, that, that's the goal.
That's the goal.
So can we now chart that each month?
Sure.
Very good.
And, and that would start after we finish the process with that, because you want to do that uniformly.
When's that, when's that finished?
What we're shooting for is for September first, hopefully, if we can get it done, if not, then it would be actually.
Well, let's, let's start tracking it anyway. It's not starting until September, but I, I, I think Andrew's right in, in the sense of. We want to see it too, because then we can keep everybody accountable as well.
Yeah.
It was letters we're putting in the hopes for people getting assistance, did you put that in the letter?
We have not had enough, we keep it put at the bottom of, of his notes.
So that's part of uh the push, essentially uh. Drafts are with Frank and that month that we're talking about is essentially training the staff. It's getting the staff ready to deal with the onslaught of hopefully recertifications and requests for repayment agreements. Um, I think essentially. The paperwork is ready to go, it's preparing everybody to make sure we're on the same. The paperwork is ready to go. It's preparing everybody to make sure we're on the same page and we're prepared to um deal with it when it comes.
I'm probably gonna have to. I don't, I don't like that word drafts. You talked about a lot of drafts here tonight. There's no voting, there's no moving things forward. Let's go.
I I am ready to go. Frank says they're going out.
The education in that letter saying, letting people know that they have to pay their rent from COVID. So I think a lot of people think they don't like it's, oh, yeah, we didn't have to pay it. It's a back rate, it's both.
So as part of the, part, part of the idea here is to put systems in place going forward so that this doesn't become an issue. Um, and everybody, staff, everybody may is better equipped to deal with this going forward. Um, and to have it be uh. More easily trackable, um, and something that frankly, staff doesn't even have to think about. Like, okay, this needs to be done, this needs to be done, this needs to be done. So that's part. But also, part of it is at the beginning here, yes, there are going to be, there's a notice going out saying, okay, here's the amount you owe. Just because COVID happened doesn't mean that you don't owe this amount. Um, if you have to come in and recertify, it'll make clear that there could be adjustments to income and just because you didn't report it, doesn't mean you're not responsible for it. Um, so yes, there basically is a first opportunity before we're necessarily filing anything with the courts. To try and say to the residents, all right, let's come in and let's see if we can figure this out. Let's see if we can get us all to a place where. Um, even if you're not repaying everything on the spot, you're on a repayment agreement, you're recertified and we're working towards um basically getting you. Back to where you should have been all along. Um, and if that doesn't work, shortly thereafter, the next step would be. Potential legal filings, things like that. But uh the first step is to offer everybody the opportunity to come in and try and work it out.
And the rental assistance for the county is up August thirty-first. Let's hear guys over. There is education. I know that we've been doing some education around this. City does it, state does it. Do we need to do more? And how many people are you looking at? Are we have one of the numbers, like how many people do we?
That goes to what Andrew says, yeah, right, so we can track it, yeah.
Because if it's, if it's a lot, then maybe we need to look at it a little differently, because you don't want to. I'm thinking from the resident's perspective. You want to, of course, we have to collect the money, but you don't want to scare somebody either. So maybe if you've been working together and it's some education around it, come in, we're not scary. Sit down with us, talk to us. We'll come up with a plan that works, that's beneficial for everybody.
Yes.
You don't hide.
Yes.
Cause hiding is only gonna make it worse.
A- and that's part of the discussion we had the other day and uh my advice to Frank. Is that the housing authority should have a real set of guidelines in terms of these repayment agreements. Exact, for example, how long are we willing to go? Um, are we willing to go twelve months, twenty-four months, whatever? Uh, and coming up with a set of guidelines so that everybody's treated fairly. And when people come in, everybody's given the same guidelines to say, okay, we're willing to work with you. Here's what we're willing to do. Let's see if we can find something that works for your situation.
But it's only been since May, May or. You could start in collecting, right? We couldn't even collect rent by law, right? And there was a certain month.
So there was a moratorium on filing eviction cases.
Okay.
Um, I mean, you can still correct, collect it, and there have been uh notices that have gone out during pandemic saying, you know, just as a reminder, you're still responsible for paying your rent. Um, but there haven't been non-payment eviction filings.
I kind of piggybacking back on what Erica was saying. When she's saying educating, that means that our manager's offices must be open. They must be open to the residents. People have to be able to go in there, speak to your manager. I know personally, Yolanda Sosoko has was my manager for so long. And I would refuse to speak to the assistant manager because I had a relationship with her and I could talk to her. She made herself available for me. But I do get a lot of complaints where they're saying the managers don't wanna see them. They don't. So how do you educate? How are you going to get them to feel comfortable enough to come to you and say, this is what I went through, this is what I'm going through? Um, and to be honest, a lot of the times the residents don't wanna speak to that person that's at the front desk. They wanna speak to their direct manager. And I think the managers and everyone as a staff needs to readily make themselves available to do that for the residents.
What's, what, let me ask the question. I'm sorry, direct, we cut you off. What's the policy, right? What's the internal administrative policy for the? Um, for each of the ends, right?
They first go to their manager. Manager has responsibility to make sure that that problem is addressed. They do have an assistant, but it's their responsibility to make sure it's addressed. If then they can't address it. That manager should be contacting their supervisor, Frank. If that can't happen, it comes to me.
Okay.
So tha- that's clearly it. And Frank, you wanna talk about a little bit what you've talked to the manager, because I know we've talked about this.
Yeah, so that's that's kinda like in general, but any follow-up there.
Mm-hmm.
Specifically for what we're talking about now, that's why we wanna spend a full month of getting the managers ready, getting the offices ready, getting the people work ready. Really having a solid time, because it's gonna be like open season. When those, when that, our bachelor list goes out. The law, phones are gonna light up, your phone's are gonna light up, his phone's are gonna light up, because everybody's gonna be like, what do you need? To your point.
Sure.
Corinne is gonna be part, she, Corinne's been uh joining us and he's gonna continue to join us in training so that we can put an educational piece. That is the most important part. Get people knowing, like to your point, the bullet points. Listen, uh, you're not going to do this alone. We understand, we just come to your manager and and you'll be able to afford the opportunity to to enter into, uh, we gave an agreement or something like that.
Okay.
Our goal is not to make anybody feel bad. Actually, people who are behind on the rent stressing out because they know that their rent is late. They don't know how to get over that problem and. Entering into a repayment agreement is like hitting the reset button. It's like, okay, still owe the money, but I don't have to worry. Like, I know that I'm safe and as long as I make my repayment. That repayment agreement is what's next. And and once we have the package already in the letter, I will share with you guys. If you guys kinda wanna have a, even a special part with us, we just kinda go through that so that. That's as much of the component of us being ready for it as as the management side of it.
And getting the rental assistance has not been any easier for our residents.
Yeah.
I know we worked on it and I know I've worked with managers for three months to get one person rental assistance. This is the back and forth of getting the information they need. You sign it, it's not what they want. They send it back to you. No, I'm not getting it. And so it it's it's as a whole, I don't think it's just, you know, just us, just even the bureaucracy that you have to go through to even get the assistance. It it's hard for the residents, so. That's something we have to have to keep in mind that they do apply. It could take them up to ninety days. For three, four months before they even get an approval. And they can wait ninety days and the county can say, no, we don't have it. We we're not gonna give it to you.
Would there be any benefit now to having something like a NICSIL and our flyers put up to talk about it's gonna expire August thirty-first?
Yeah.
There be any benefits of that now?
I'll send you the the information that we have with, with, from the county.
Yeah, through far, yeah. And I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure you could put in there that Hopes is willing to help anyone who needs help preparing their paperwork.
And there are other agencies like Bayon of, um, Bayon Economic Office, you know. BOF, yes. They get rental assistance, the shelter gets rental assistance, but their rental assistance is a little different. And I think this is where also the residents need to be aware. So there's COVID assistance that's coming through the county. That's for COVID-related issues. You couldn't pay your rent, you couldn't work, you got COVID, you lost income, that's when they help you. But if you didn't pay your rent because you chose not to pay your rent, but you were working and doing so forth, then guess what? That's not the program for you. So then you would have to go to someone like BOF, you would have to go to someone like the shelter. That gets funds for rental assistance and unfortunately, they don't get that much. So those funds, as soon as they get it, it's. I mean, it's really short, a short time before anybody even knows about it, first of all, because it's usually not publicized. Properly, it's publicized within the counties that, like Bayon, publicizes it to Bayon. Hoboken, I haven't really seen. The shelter publicized when they get funding. We usually see like a press release. Kind of, and that's how we kind of know it. Another agency is North Hudson Community Action Corps. They also get it. And but they try to stick to where they serve. So if they serve Union City, they'll say it's for Union City, you kind of had. Fight them and say, no, it's given for the entire county. So if you don't know it, they they'll get away with saying, no, it's just for Union City residents, because we've had those issues where we've had to fight the agency and say, no, it's for the entire county, not a city. So these are some of the things that the residents go through too as well when they're get, trying to get it.
Thank you, Al.
You don't get too much. Seven hundred and fifteen families.
Yeah. Well, we, we said.
A chunk, maybe three hundred that are.
Really?
So, and then of that three hundred, then half of those, not half, of that three hundred about. A small chunk, more than largest part of the money. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna. We're gonna do like different types of kinda like.
Right.
Treatments for people.
Sure, makes sense.
Like, for people that only owe like less than a thousand, hey, we can put you on a simple thing and that's that. For you guys, it's this is what we're doing for the people. And if we can tackle the big number first, we're gonna see that impact right away. And that's, that's the goal, to kinda have a different touch, different approaches for each one of those.
And let me talk about it, self community meeting. It's not, we're not the only housing.
Oh, no, no, no.
It's clearly possible. Our numbers are that to say that we we encounter is pretty average.
Yeah. Yeah, and our fee account was very clear on that. I'm glad you reminded me of that, Commissioner. He's he works with many housing authorities. We're all in this boat.
Yeah.
Yeah, right now.
And I will point out, sorry, to be labor the point, uh, if it does get to the point of requiring a court filing, which obviously. We'd like to avoid, I say this all the time, and I hope. Uh, it's taken us sincere. The goal here is not to evict anyone, it's not to put anyone on the street. It's to collect the money that the housing authority needs to be able to make improvements and run the housing authority day to day forever. Um, but if it does get to court, the court process is extremely slow right now. Any non-payment case that we would initiate tomorrow would require notice before it could even be filed, then that's a month. Once it's filed, the case that would be filed uh middle of September, I would guess right now, probably wouldn't proceed to an actual trial. Until the middle of two thousand twenty-three. Everything is probably just under six months out right now. That's how slowly everything is moving. So it behooves the housing authority to try and enter into these repayment agreements without having to go through the expense of. Paying me to go to court, um, and sitting there to wait for these cases to progress and the balances to build up. We wanna get people on the right track so that it doesn't get to one day where a court says, okay, you owe X amount or you have to be out. Um, so that's the goal, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you, council. I appreciate that. And uh we we've been working hard on this, by the way. Uh, those were prepared for moving forward. Um, housing choice, oh, oh, management uh and maintenance is also working on a. Um, uh, an emergency plan with the city's Office of Emergency Management. Uh, the city has included us in their task force on that and we're coordinating with them. Uh, on getting a brand new emergency reaction plan for the housing authority. Should be able to show that to you soon. Uh, housing choice vouchers, uh, we did meet with finance committee this month. Uh, regarding the concept of putting out a new project-based voucher, uh, RFPs, we're going to be meeting again uh soon. Uh, to go back over and see what we found, some new issues, we found some good things. So we're we're gonna be moving back to that committee this coming month to go back over that. Um, maintenance report, we've been actively chasing holes that both skunks and and vermin, so you've heard a lot about that tonight. Uh, we're going to fill those holes as quickly as possible and we are meeting with a uh wildlife removal firm next week. We continue to work on special emergency and preventative repairs. Um, I did put two attachments. One is major projects done by our staff. And two is major projects done by outside contractors. Um, we do a lot of work over the course of a month. Um, I, if you look at those reports, there's a lot of projects there. Uh, we had a a major uh break at Adams this month. Uh, which was just huge. Um, we wound up having to shut the water off um that night. Um, and again, it takes just a ton of staff work, a ton of time and sucks up a lot of money. Um, in this particular instance, somebody was putting a pillow down their toilet. And the pillow came down into the bin that was right in the community room and sat there and expanded. And the water from the whole building was pressing on it. And then it exploded out. Um, and there's no way you could stop all the wastewater from coming down for the night. So, yeah, pillow, pillow, so at any rate. All the batting. Stuffing for the pillow. So so that 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 type of stuff um happens. Um, and our old pipes are old, so they bust too easily. Um, but again, I I am proud of what our staff does on day-to-day basis. Uh, in addition, maintenance is working on the addition of that gate on the fifth side of Mama Johnson Fifth Street, side of Mama Johnson Field. Uh, that that is in contract of progress. Uh, we're gonna be repaving the traffic circle in front of Fox Hill. Um, it needs a repave job there. Uh, we're re-establishing our towing contract. Uh, we're repairing screens in the hallways and upgraded screens on our laundry and mail rooms. Uh, we're looking at getting something that's more vandal proof. Uh, we have been having an issue in our laundry rooms, particularly where. People have been getting in through that screen. They've been breaking that screen and uh tampering with the window and coming in through those windows. So we're looking at a higher upgrade on those. We have been pressure washing throughout the um housing authority. Um, thank you for that, Sammy. Your crews have been working hard as long as, as well as. Uh, tree removal. We are currently painting the Adams Garden Lobby and Community Room. Um, we're working with Verizon to clean up the wires on the outside and inside of our buildings. Um, and then tree trimming throughout the housing authority. Um, last but not least, Mr. Farrar is meeting with the Laundry Machine Supply Company. Um, we are not particularly happy with the service we're getting at this moment, but we're meeting with their upper echelon people right now. You may see an RFP coming. Out on that, because we're not particularly happy with the service we're getting right now. Um, finance, finance department has been busy finalizing the housing mortgage finance stuff. And uh working with the uh working this month on the adjustments uh to the staff pay through the new, the new union agreement. And Daniel, if you're with us somewhere, we can close out the report. Let you back there in columns, no?
Hi, everyone. Hello, um, just quickly, I just wanted to uh under my Snapchat report, um, under highlights, I really wanted to thank the Hoboken Food Pantry. They've been doing bi-monthly food distribution to the Hoboken Housing Authority, also the rest of the community. However, they do have a personal care um distribution of family hours every uh second Tuesday, actually every two weeks on Tuesdays. So anyone that's interested in wanting to pick up some shampoo and sanitizers and diapers and baby formula and toothpaste and toothbrush. These are very costly items. They can also pick them up at the Hoboken uh Food Pantry at thirteen-one Washington Street. We're gonna be sending a NICSIL out. When their next distribution or family shopping hour is at their location. Also, the director touched on the success of the basketball. Uh, summer league that we're holding at the Marshall Drive ba- uh basketball court. Actually, any plan or event or initiative that we have is not successful unless we have participation. So I really wanna thank the young men that are out there really enjoying uh the sports and really uh. Putting forth their interest in uh making sure that uh any plan or activity that we can come up with, you know, they participate. So. No, but if we have no participation or interest, uh, any plan that we have is not gonna be successful. So I really wanna thank those young men for that. Uh, on upcoming events, uh, Hope is is gonna be pampering some of our seniors coming up in the next week. So seniors, get ready. Ice cream, uh, spa day and other fun activities. And that's gonna be, uh, that information is gonna be posted on Friday in the common areas of all of our senior buildings. So please be ready for that. Seniors, I I think they're having their nails done or something, so. Many of you guys are really gonna be excited for that. Additionally, uh, thanks to the push of uh the commissioner, Erica Seitzman, and also our chair, I believe Michael was also involved. The city of Hoboken is coming to our Mama Johnson Field for Movies Under the Stars. Yay. Okay, so we're having minions, right? So finally, it's been a while. So, uh, August twenty-second, eight P M, we're gonna have our movies under the stars. So flowers are gonna go out tomorrow to all of our common areas. As well, you're gonna see that information on our website. And uh finally. Um, eh, as you know, we do uh some events and programs at the Christopher Columbus location. So on the twenty-seventh, we're having our family, family barbecue day. So anyone, please stop by, have fun with us, uh, enjoy some burgers and hot dogs and ice cream and other stuff. And that starts at two P M. Yeah, two to five P M. So on the twenty-seventh, hopefully everyone will join us at Christopher Columbus. Some music and ice cream. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dana. Great work. And that concludes my reporting. Making it shorter.
Thank you, Director. Um, I guess we can move on to our resolutions now.
You have another agenda.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Reports of the committee.
I, I did in my, um, in my report, I did mention the facilities and capital improvement. Uh, I did mention the finance committee. I talked about the project-based voucher and the, uh, Resident Services Committee. Um, met as well to talk about, as, as I said in my report, the issue of the Mama Johnson Field use.
Okay.
Uh, as Chair of the Finance Committee, I have something to add. So, we, we had a meeting on Monday. After the meeting, we agreed to get a little more information and also have the entire committee there. Um, and first of all, let me secondly, I should have done it first. Thank you for appointing me as Chair of the Subcommittee. I appreciate it. I think it's important that we all treat ourselves, treat each other with respect and settle expectations. So before I go any further, I'd just like to ask Commissioner Russo, are you okay?
Am I okay?
Yes.
You look okay. Yes.
Okay, yeah, you, you weren't able to attend the committee, uh, or did you join late and I didn't know?
No, no, I was, I was unable to attend because a family member's building burned down. And I had to make sure that, uh, my uncles were okay. So, yeah, I'm okay personally, and they're okay. There was no, uh. No injury or anything like that, but it was, seems to be a total loss, although I think the whole building's gonna have to be, um, renovated. Well, they're working on it right now, so, but I, I appreciate your concern. Very nice of you.
I'm very sorry to hear that. And it can always count on me to treat you like you mean, and to be respectful. Appreciate it. Um, there was a committee meeting that I did attend, uh, because that day, I found out someone close to me had cancer. And that's why I didn't attend that. Just as a next time, um. Commissioner Bastardo brought up to this board concerns about attendance, could just.
I would just like to say, if, and I'm so sorry to cut you off. As the Chair of this Board, I don't feel that it's anyone's business what is going on in your personal lives. That's number one. If you have a committee meeting and you can't make it and you would like to tell the Director why you can make it. That is absolutely appropriate. I don't think that that's something that should be brought into public or anybody should be forced. To say publicly. So that's what I would just like to say, and I would, you know, and, and this is not against you, this is just. I understand where it's coming from in the past and so forth. I just don't wanna make it a habit where we're here every month. Saying, well, why didn't you come to the meeting, or why didn't you come to the meeting? If there's an issue with anyone on this board with attending any meeting, I'd greatly appreciate it. You let the Director know. The Director and I are in communication consistently. We have a great communication, so. Please feel free to let the Director know personally, and that's as far as it should go.
I.
So, thank you.
I agree with you.
And Chairperson.
I completely agree with you. Uh, two meetings ago, for the last meeting, I was attacked by Commissioner.
And I apologize.
You don't need to apologize. You don't need to apologize.
There was no attack. I was simply saying, if you, and again, this is ridiculous, we have to go over this. With all the issues that we have in the housing authority, we gotta spend time on this nonsense. All I'm saying was. If you have a committee meeting and we're going over the, the annual budget, just let. Either the Director know you can't make it, so someone else can attend. That's all I said. The fact was, you, you weren't there and you didn't communicate that. Now, if I did that, I would expect the same thing.
But I also think with all the respect.
It was just a factual statement made, and I hope that's enough of what we have to say on this topic.
Correct.
Move on.
Again, from here on, I would prefer as the Chair that an email be sent to the Director. Or text message, and it be addressed with the Director, and then we can take it from there. If there's another person that has, that the alternate is not available, then unfortunately, yes, we would have to reschedule it.
Madam Chair, uh, just, aside, um, from my perspective as the Council President, right? It's your prerogative to set committees and to appoint members of those committees. If you feel, uh, or if any chairperson individually from a committee feels that someone's not doing their job on that committee. Most certainly have the, uh, the ability to change them out, to remove them from that committee. Uh, and I would just suggest as the chairperson of the Finance Committee, or any committee for that matter, if there's an issue with the Commissioner. And they're not participating, communicate that to the Chair and let the Chair make the decision. Um, just personally, I honestly, I, I think it is a lot of nonsense that we're continuing to talk about it. But no one should feel like they're being attacked, no one should feel like they're being threatened. Um, this is a board that I think. You know, it's the article all the time. This is the sacred cow, right? This is the one that. Leave your damn politics, right? It, it should never enter, especially these meetings. We have so many issues in the authority that we should be working on to, to alleviate for our residents that. The politics is nonsense, the, the personal animus toward each other, if in fact that exists. None of that should come to this table. We should put all of that aside and do our job. So. Uh, I, I do appreciate your concerns. I appreciate you reaching out and, and, and expressing that here tonight. Um, you know, Andrew, uh, reached out to me the night of the meeting. Uh, I told him, and I also told the Director. Uh, so I appreciate all of you, uh, really reaching out and making sure that my family was okay. So, thank you very much.
Would you like to continue?
I'd like to say that I really wanna listen to you, uh, Chair, to you, Commissioner Russo, because. My, uh, argument is not. And I understand your perspective, and I would really wish that this matter is settled, but it isn't settled. Uh, I have been targeted on many occasions. There is a history of things that has happened to me as a Commissioner, for all terms that I've served as Commissioner here. And frankly, that has never been addressed. And when Commissioner Apostado publicly tries to make me look bad, or make look, anyone look bad. I wanna go on record and say that I've been on this board for years. And this is the first time that I'm standing up and saying something about it. Because when somebody criticizes staff with the police, or makes any kind of critical comments. And he's done it, I let it go, because that's the job of Commissioner, is to ask some tough questions. Well, when you come after any of the Commissioners. I'm gonna defend the Board. I'm gonna defend the Commissioners. And I really don't think that it is appropriate to try and embarrass another Commissioner in front of the other Commissioners, in front of the staff. Because then all of us lose a little measure of respect. So, I'm gonna withhold everything that I have that I could say.
That's not.
Well, then I'll address it privately, because I'm not gonna do it publicly. I'm gonna, I'm gonna listen to you. And even for his benefit, I'm not gonna share what I know.
What we can do is, we can do, we can share whatever we have to say. We just need to do it respectfully amongst each other. Same way, we ask our residents that come here and speak, and I personally have asked them to be respectful of the Board. Of the Director, of the Staff, of everyone here. I think that we, as elected individuals, put on this Board. To help the Director. I think we can say what we have to say. I, I'm, I'm a component of that. I may say things that many people may not agree with me, but I'm gonna say it. But I'm gonna say respectfully, I let it go at the door and I move on. And I think that's what we, as a Board, and as a whole. Need to learn to do. So you have every right to say what you say, as long as you say, you have to say, as long as it's respectfully. I would never stop you from, from doing that. That's not my job.
Appreciate you saying that. I will think over.
Okay.
What you've shared.
Thank you.
And I will share with you, and I will share with Vice Chair, uh, what I know, and then perhaps we can all get together at the appropriate venue. To talk this out.
Absolutely. Thank you. Is there anything else?
Sure. So I think that it's okay to have this conversation, and I think it's okay for the residents to understand. The City Council, you see it all the time. Not everybody gets along on the top. But I think people have to understand that everybody today has these things, their number one priority. If they're, because you gotta remember, we're volunteers with fancy paperwork, because except for you, we're volunteers with fancy paperwork. Who are here to serve the residents, and if, and you hope, you hope, you pray, you do everything in your power, you think that everybody's giving around. It's here, and I haven't seen, I've seen everybody here do for the residents, and I have not seen anybody not do. So if we could just remember, that's our focus, that's our primary focus. And sometimes you have a little cat, but families do, which is okay, but just keep in mind. We are volunteers who are here, who are appointed here by various entities to look out for the residents.
I, I just, I just, I, I have to say. You, you, you're, you're talking about things that you're, you're, first of all, you're being a hypocrite. Second of all.
This is exactly where we're. This is exactly, we're now, we're, we're changing the subject, because. We can say what we have to say, as long as we say it respectfully. You sat here, you just called him a hypocrite in front of a room of residents and staff. That is unacceptable. So could we please move on to the resolution, please? Thank you. To the resolution. Listen, I didn't care anything about developers, Andrew. I, I really did not. Okay, but this is something that's caught up before, and I just finished saying, from here on, all I would like is for everyone to treat each other respectfully. As I ask everyone who comes into this room to treat the staff, the Board, the officers, anybody who's here. Just to speak to everyone respectfully. I said that three minutes ago, and your first words out of your mouth is, you're a hypocrite.
He's, he's.
We move on to the resolution. Thank you.
The, uh, the, the first resolution.
Resolution twenty twenty two oh eight oh one, resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to approve. The minute, the meeting minutes for July fourteenth, twenty twenty two regular Board meeting.
Motion.
Second. Vocal, Director?
Anthony Forbes, Andrew Apostado.
Yes.
Aaron Lewit. Yes, Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Michael Russo.
Yes.
James Sanford.
No.
Erica Seitzman.
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty two oh eight oh two, resolution authorizing the payment of monthly list of bills for the Hoboken Housing Authority.
Motion.
Second. Director, vocal?
Anthony Forbes, Andrew Apostado.
Yes.
Aaron Lewit.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Michael Russo.
I.
James Sanford.
No.
Erica Seitzman.
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty two oh eight oh three, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to renew membership. In the New Jersey Public Housing Joint Insurance Fund.
Motion.
Second. Role call, Director?
Anthony Forbes, Andrew Apostado.
Yes.
Aaron Lewit.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Michael Russo.
I.
James Sanford.
I'm staying.
Erica Seitzman.
Yes. Resolution number twenty twenty two oh eight oh four, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken. To increase the amount of the contract for Adams and Monroe Gardens Masonry Repairs.
Motion.
Second. Any questions, Director?
Anthony Forbes, Andrew Apostado.
Yes.
Aaron Lewit.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Michael Russo.
I.
James Sanford.
Stay.
Erica Seitzman.
Resolution number twenty twenty two oh eight oh five, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken. To amend, amend the admissions and continued occupi- occupancy policy of the Authority.
Motion.
Second. Would anyone like to say anything, um, concerning this?
So can we just give a brief overview to people that were not here for, uh, so, uh, August first meeting? So we, people understand what we're voting on.
Sure, Director.
Absolutely.
Or, or even.
It's up to you, Matt. Would you like me to? Uh, so this first resolution that is currently before the Board is to amend the admissions and continued occupancy policy. To revise the language with respect to preferences, um, to add in a preference for, uh, admission for all residents of the City of Hoboken. Um, it currently, uh, there are certain categories of residents in the City of Hoboken who have a preference, and I know there were some questions after the last. Lottery and, uh, waiting list opening, and the Board expressed a desire to add, uh, an additional preference for all. Residents of the City of Hoboken going forward. So that wouldn't apply to the lottery that was already held. But anytime the waiting list is open going forward, there will, if this passes, there will now be a preference for, uh, residents of the city. And one thing I will point out, uh, and I know Commissioner Russo, I told you, I apologize, I didn't have the exact number off the top of my head. The HUD review, if this is passed by the Board, the HUD review period is technically seventy-five days. So HUD can sit on it for seventy-five days. Hopefully, they will not, but they can if they want to. Um, so this may not become final, it was submitted as early as tomorrow. May not become final and effective until, uh, as late as October twenty-sixth. The hope is that, um, HUD will get back to us sooner and approve it, but this now goes to HUD, it doesn't become effective tomorrow. It becomes effective upon HUD approval, and that qualifier will apply to the next resolution as well, the criminal activity clause.
So they can prove it in five.
They can, right, they, they can approve it Monday morning, they want to.
But as, but the, the.
If, if, if they decide to sit on it, after seventy-five days, it automatically becomes effective.
So what do we have?
We'll keep trying.
Uh, so, any questions about any of that?
I appreciate it. So, thank you.
Director vocal?
Andrew Forbes, Andrew Apostado.
Yes.
Aaron Lewit.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Michael Russo.
I.
James Sanford.
Stay.
Erica Seitzman.
Yes. Resolution number twenty twenty two oh eight oh six, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken. To adopt a drug abuse or criminal activity policy.
Motion.
Second. I would just.
Would you like me, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, so this is intended to replace the current one-strike policy of the Authority. That has to do with, um, criminal activity for both, uh, applicants and participants in the public housing program. Um, just briefly, uh, the goal here is to have a more comprehensive policy that. Sets everything out more clearly and more clearly defines the expectations for both the Housing Authority and residents. And explains what the Housing Authority will do, um, if there is a violation of the policy. Uh, one thing that has been discussed a lot, it gets into, um, what the Housing Authority can consider. If there, if someone has entered a rehab program, things like that, or depending upon the severity of the offense. Uh, it gets into a lot more nuanced than the existing one-strike policy, which technically is, if you're involved in criminal activity, you're out. Um, but it also sets clearer expectations for the residents who do violate it by saying. If this is your violation, this is what you can expect. Um, so, I, I think it, uh, is beneficial to all parties to have everything laid out more clearly and, uh. Hopefully in, um, a little bit less legalese, more layman's terms.
I just also wanna add on top of what you said, Matt, that I, myself, um, Councilman Russo, Commissioner Russo. Erica Seitzman and Mr. Forbes, who just recently came on board, this was something that we have been working on. I wanna say almost a year, correct? Over a year, way over, way, way, yeah, way over. And I am proud to say that we are probably one of not many housing authorities that kinda take. Um, what our residents are going through into consideration. And that our goal here is not to evict anyone, but if they need help for us to find them the resources. To, to get that help so that they can maintain their home. So I think that makes me, and I, I hope you guys extremely proud. To, to pass to be one of the few housing authorities that takes that into consideration, where a lot of them are more of. It's one strike and you're out of here, there's no chances. So I'm proud of that.
And, and if I can just add to that, Madam Chair, I apologize for stepping on you at the end there. It also, uh, the Housing Authority understands that there are some people who will engage in activity that is so severe that. Um, it may require eviction, and that I think it better protects the residents who abide by their lease and do everything they're supposed to. Um, because it gives the Housing Authority greater authority to enforce that.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt, and thank you, everyone who's worked on this. Director?
Anthony Forbes, Andrew Apostado.
Yes.
Aaron Lewit.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Michael Russo.
I.
James Sanford.
Stay. Stay.
Erica Seitzman.
Yes. New business?
Motion to vote.
Motion to vote.
Hi. My favor.
Thank you for hanging in for a long meeting. I appreciate it.